Debra Basket, can I ask you to turn on your camera and test your mic for me really quickly?
Do you have what you need for me?
I can hear you. I can't see.
I don't know why you can't see me.
I see. I see. You have your camera on. It looks like you have a lens cover over or something because you're just a black square.
Wait, I have. That's what I see. My dog is choosing this one to say hello as well. Let me, let me go out and come back in again. That's all I can think of.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Rita McConnell, can you test your camera and your microphone for me? Counselor Normella, can you test your camera and your microphone for me, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Are you?
You can. Can you hear me?
Counselor Normella, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
John McConnell, can I have you test your camera and your microphone really quickly for me?
Hi Abby, just microphone for the time being. I'm trying to get my camera fixed.
And I can hear you loud and clear, so thank you. Debra Basket, I see that, I still see a black square, but can I at least hear you?
Yes, you can. I am present. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Hall, could you test your camera and microphone for me?
Should be good to go, Abby. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hall.
Good evening. Welcome to a special council meeting for February 7, 2022. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Normella.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to our special meeting for tonight, and we have had a request to have public comment, and so I need to poll the council to see what your thoughts are. Mr. Baker, or Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Even though it's not agendized, I think we can make room for it tonight and then also on second reading, so I vote yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Thanks for the discussion. I think it's not agendized, and so anything not agendized, I have a very strong conflict with, just because it sets a precedence that if we don't agendize, then we can discuss matters on it. I don't want to leave anyone out that may have wanted to comment if it was agendized, so I don't want to change in the middle of the flow, so I will be a no, but we'll do what my colleagues say.
Mayor Protem.
I too want to be consistent. I understand wanting to hear from the public. However, my concern is, is this wasn't agendized, and in previous meetings, the, in most of the meetings that I've been a part of special meetings, and I can attest every single one that we have not done that, so I feel like this is a consistency issue. My bigger concern is, if it wasn't agendized and people did not think there would be public comment, that leaves out the folks who didn't come because they thought there was no public comment, so that kind of leaves it to luck of the draw whether or not you showed up, so I feel like we should leave it off because it wasn't agendized.
Counselor Normella.
Just a question. Would we be able to have public comment on the same item next week or in two weeks?
Yes, when we were in the midst of setting this agenda this week, that was why it wasn't put on here, because normally it isn't, and we knew that people could talk under public comment next week.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of lean toward where Mayor Protem Demat and Counselor Emmons are with this, that we didn't have it agendized, and it wouldn't, you know, I'm open to being, you know, to having somebody speak, but, you know, I kind of lean more toward getting this agendized so that everybody has a fair opportunity. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi.
I think we need to allow public comment tonight. The goal is always to be as transparent as possible, and I understand the agendized point, but there are probably some people to hear tonight who may have not known the rule that there is no public comment, who would like to give comment, and I think any opportunity, we should always take the opportunity to make this process as transparent as possible, so I would vote yes.
Well, since I was involved in, in putting the agenda together and looking at our time constraints and everything that we had, and knowing that I was told we could, we would have public comment at the next meeting, that is why it doesn't say public comment on tonight's council agenda, so I'm a no for consistency, and for the people that didn't, that did read this and knew that there wasn't going to be, but there is going to be next week, we look forward to their conversations. So with that, we have Counselors Bill Number Nine. Counselor Seymour.
Moved to pass Counselors Bill Number Nine on first reading, amending the effective date, section of the ordinance number 4018, series 2020.
Counselor Smith, or Emmons, sorry.
Uh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number Nine on first reading. Is there any further comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Oh.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
No.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-two vote.
Counselor Seymour.
I move to pass Counselors Bill Number Ten on first reading, amending the effective data section of ordinance number 4019, series 2020.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number Ten. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
No.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
No.
The motion passes on a five-two vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Move to pass Counselors Bill Number Eleven on first reading, amending effective date of section of ordinance 4020, series 2020.
Counselor Emmons.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number Eleven. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
No.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
And Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-two vote.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to close the second, or the special meet, meeting, and at 6:43, I will close this meeting. We have an executive session, and first item of business is, I need council to vote on allowing Counselor Normella to be involved in that executive session, because she's remote.
I move to allow from remote participation by Counselor Normella in the executive session for the Westminster City Council and the Westminster Economic Development Board for February 7, 2022.
Oh, Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow Counselor Normella to be in the executive sessions. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Okay, do we have cause, Mr. Frankel, for executive session?
We do, Mayor. Excuse me. My technology lined up. The first executive session that's on tonight's agenda for city council is to consult with the city attorney and special counsel regarding pending eminent domain litigation in Jefferson County District Court Case 2020 CV 30231, and for the purpose of receiving legal advice thereon pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C3 and Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for B and E1.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. I will poll council, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Demat. I got to remember, looking at my screen, Counselor Normella.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be in executive session and come back out for more of the meeting.
Abby, can I try the camera again? It's Debra.
I think so. That would be. Okay. Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's something like, uh, what? The. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Welcome, we are back to our study session. It is 8:17 and we have reports from the mayor. I don't have anything other than I have been meeting as I can with other area mayors and getting to know them because I work with them in so many other types of meetings and they're all virtual at this point. So it's been nice to have breakfast with them in person. And today was breakfast with the mayor from Broomfield and I'll be sending council. They have a system where when land use is coming to the council, they have a pre look at things before you get into all the crux of things just to talk about how should this development look? And it also gives public comments. So I'll be sending it to you, city manager and to the council. So you can take a look. It was just, I always love learning how other councils work and what, how they do things. And she asked me some questions about what we do and she likes some things. So we're sharing information. Counselors, any reports? Mayor Pro-Tim?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to give a quick, I know that most of you were there, but for the public, council was invited to do a push-in ceremony for our new Engine One at Station One. Beautiful piece of fire equipment to both serve the community and keep our people in our, in our community safe. I think it was very neat to see that ceremony. They had talked about the last call for the current Engine One or former now Engine One was to go give aid to the Marshall fires, which I thought was pretty neat. For those of you who don't know, our first responders did help in that, those efforts. So I just wanted to make note of that. It was a pretty neat ceremony to be a part of. Never been to one of those before, but the commissioning of that fire apparatus was, was pretty neat and I was glad we got to participate.
That brings us to city managers' report.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Pro-Tim, city counselors, thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. I would like to bring a few items to your attention. First, Tri-County Health's mask mandate expired last Friday and as such, the city has suspended the masking requirements for entry to city facilities in Adams County. That includes but is not limited to City Hall, the municipal court, Irving Street Library and the MAC. Jefferson County Health will also be allowing its mask mandate to expire on February 18th at 12:01 a.m., at which time the city will also suspend the masking requirements for its facilities in Jefferson County. That includes the City Park Recreation Center and Fitness Center as well as the Westview Recreation Center. And of course, our other facilities as well in Jefferson County. Second, there are two items on tonight's agenda regarding collective bargaining for our two public safety departments. The first will provide an update on our existing firefighters' collective bargaining process, which kicks off tomorrow. And the second will provide an update on a draft collective bargaining ordinance for our police officers that is modeled after the one in place for our firefighters. I would also like to highlight that tonight staff will be making a presentation on the city's work with our regional partners on the homelessness crisis along the front range and receiving direction from city council on some key areas of this work. Although tonight's discussion will focus on the regional work, I wanted to let you know that we will be coming back in a later meeting to follow up directly on Westminster's local homelessness issues and how we are working to address those. We do have a full night tonight with up to four executive sessions, one of which we've just completed. And we do appreciate your patience as well as the patience of our residents in our community with us tonight. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. So first up, collective bargaining process with the city and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 2889.
Got it. Thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Callaway. I'm an attorney with the city. Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, counselors, nice to, nice to see you this evening. We have a presentation that we're going to go through and I'm the attorney who has been assisting the city, starting with the drafting of the ordinance and then through, now we will be starting our third negotiation for a collective bargaining agreement. So we've got, I'm going to assume somebody's going to forward the slides for me. Okay, good. So I'm going to just kind of go through this to the extent that you have any questions, of course, please interrupt me so that I can provide you with any information that you might need. So what we've got up here is kind of the history of where we've been with collective bargaining thus far. The relationship started back in 2014 and at that time, the firefighters asked the city council to bargain. My slides are kind of small, so I'm going to try to look at the screen as well. There, there was, the question was put before the voters in 2016 in terms of whether the voters were agreeable to permitting the firefighters to collectively bargaining, bargain. That was passed. In 2017, the, in May, the, excuse me. The city approved a collective bargaining ordinance and that was actually done in conjunction with the International Association of Firefighters, the IAFF. And there was a lot of back and forth, but there was a lot of collaboration to that process in order to come up with that ordinance. And the ordinance is really the backbone. It's what, in other states where there is a collective bargaining ordinance, because there wasn't a collective bargaining ordinance, I'm sorry, a collective bargaining statute, we drafted the ordinance to really have the, kind of the, you know, what is in the statute? What, what do the, does the union have the right to negotiate over? What are the preserved management rights? Kind of the details of that process? How does the union become certified to represent the employees in the bargaining unit? And then when there is a dispute, you know, how do we resolve the dispute? And all of that became part of that ordinance that was, that was passed in 2017. In the same year, the firefighters then, they had to be certified, they had to certify their union. So they certified Local 2889, IAFF 2889, which is the local who the city continues to bargain with. And they decided that they wanted that local to be their representative at the bargaining table as all pursuant to the ordinance. In 2018, in January of that year, the local formally requested to bargain with the city, again, following the ordinance. And in January of 2018 was the first time that we sat down with the union and bargained. We have always used what's a, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about this in a few minutes, but it's a collaborative process. So you see in the slide here, it refers to IBB. That's interest-based bargaining. And we have used that process since that first contract. The first contract was resolved in March of 2018. And in April of that same year, the council approved that initial collective bargaining agreement following the union's ratification of the agreement. It was bargained very quickly, which is kind of amazing for a first contract. I think the average first contract takes 364 days and we did it in much less than 30 days. So it was pretty amazing. That contract was effective through January 3rd of 2021. In 2020, because the ordinance requires us to bargain kind of a year in advance, we came back to the bargaining table pursuant to the locals' request and we bargained the second contract. That one, I think we did in just a couple of days, went pretty quickly. And the firefighters ratified and the council approved that agreement during March and April of 2020. And that contract is effective through January 2nd of 2023. So we are now in the process, starting tomorrow, negotiating over the third successor agreement pursuant to the ordinance. So the, just a little bit on the timeline here. What happens is that the local does come to the city and says, we would like to bargain over a successor contract. They have, there's a timeline for them to do that. They have properly done that this year as they've done in the last previous two contract cycles. We are doing interest-based bargaining training starting tomorrow. We use a federal agency, the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service, FMCS. There are two FMCS mediators in Colorado. We get them both at the same time. So they will be here with us tomorrow to remotely, because they are still working remotely. But they will be with us to facilitate that process and take us through the training. The negotiations, planning logistic meetings then will occur the following day, this Thursday on the 9th. And where the teams kind of meet separately and talk about what, you know, what some of their proposals are, what some of the issues will be. And then we've got back-to-back negotiation days starting February 26th and 20, I'm sorry, February 22nd and 23rd and then March 1st and 2nd. And per the ordinance, that bargaining is required to be completed within 30 days from when we start. Thus far, we haven't had an issue. We don't anticipate an issue this time. And there is a procedure for, for asking for an extension, should we, should we need that. Bargaining meetings, the attendance is limited to those on either side. So either for the local or for the city who are the negotiators. So obviously, we have representatives from, from the fire department. We have representatives from human resources. We have representatives from the city manager's office, who are all involved in that process. And the local gets to choose, because it's their process, who they want to have at the bargaining table. And generally, we've had great consistency in terms of who they've had and it's, the process has gone very well and we don't expect it to go any differently this year. So what we've done here is just pulled out some of the language from the ordinance. And this just gives you kind of an overview of the subjects for collective bargaining. And when I talked previously that we worked with the IAFF to come up with the ordinance, although ultimately, of course, the city council had to approve it. These, this was some of the terminology that we had agreed to. So I won't go through this in great detail, but wages is something that certainly is subject to negotiation. You can see that the definition is included here. And I know you've been provided with a great deal of information from the legal department on this process. So I don't want to belabor the point. Benefits, as they are defined here, are also subject to negotiation. Items related to personal safety is also a negotiable item as well as union representation in the disciplinary process. And you can see there, there's a reference to the specific provision in the city. And you can see there, there's a reference to the specific provision in the city ordinance that talks about what are those subjects for bargaining. Go to the next slide, please. Some of the key elements is retaining management rights. Obviously, you are a home rule unit of local government, and so that was a very important component, and in the ordinance specifically, it does detail what are those management rights that are preserved to the council. Benefits consistent with the other city employees, and that has been something that has really been a focus as we're negotiating, is that we, we really want to keep the benefits that are provided through this collective bargaining process consistent with the benefits that are provided to other city employees as well. Language and benefits are within the limitations of the ordinance, certainly. And then there's no, what's referred to as a midterm bargaining obligation. Oftentimes, in collective bargaining agreements, there might be an issue that comes up, and the parties have to engage in bargaining during the term of a current contract. What's really nice with this agreement is that we negotiate it and we put it aside. Obviously, we refer to it because there are things that come up, and it does guide the relationship and much of, much of the process, but there has not been a need to engage in midterm bargaining, and so that obviously keeps, keeps the process a little bit more under control, it controls costs, and the only time that there would be a midterm bargaining obligation is if there was, and there's a provision in the agreement that provides that if there was inadequate monies to meet the negotiated financial terms of the contract. Go to the next slide, thank you. Interest-based bargaining, and just a few words about this in the next couple of slides, talk specifically about this. As I mentioned, it is a interest-based process, and so instead of what we typically see in negotiations, where you have management on one side of the table and labor on the other side, and there's proposals in exchange, and it's a contentious process, I mean, it's sort of built that way. The way that we do this is we build a rapport, we're all in the room together. In traditional bargaining, you have a lot of caucuses where each side spends a lot of time, they spend less time in the room together and amongst themselves than they do negotiating. And the beauty of interest-based bargaining is that you really don't have caucuses. All bargaining is really done in the room, and we talk about issues and we, and interests, and how do we resolve these issues together versus the exchange and inching towards the middle, so that we can joint problem solve a resolution to any of the issues that either of the parties may have. Collaboration, cooperation, those are all terms that are really synonymous with this process. We can go to the next slide, please. So this just gives you kind of a give and take. On the left side there, you can see where a more traditional bargaining process, where it's a little bit more contentious, and you can just see by the terminology used. On the right side are, is the more interest-based approach. And so instead of positions and position, people taking positions and sticking with their positions, in interest-based, we really talk more about issues and then joint problem solve and find common interests, because if one party has an issue, chances are the other party may not be happy with that issue as well, and so we move towards the middle to try to jointly resolve those issues. And so just, you know, that kind of goes through all of the terminology in terms of what is traditional versus interest-based. The next slide really provides kind of a, it's a nice little model, and this is directly from FMCS, but you can see, and it's, think of it as a funnel, right? So we start at the top, talking about specific issues, and we start where the union might talk about their interests, and the employer might talk about their interests. We get to finding mutual interest, joint problem solving, we talk about different options together, this is all together, on how we might resolve the issue, how do we measure the options against the standards that we jointly, we've jointly laid out, and then what are the joint solutions that we come up with? So in the end, we come up with a solution that everybody can live with, that everybody who's part of the process has been involved in putting together, and so everyone's got a vested interest in that process. Next slide. So obviously, the city and the union each have designated bargaining teams, as I mentioned. It's really important, and this is part of the ordinance as well, that negotiations remain confidential. There's a lot of things that you build trust within that room, and there's a lot of things that, that are shared, that certainly could be vulnerabilities for either side. Certainly, the city bargaining team has the right to discuss with, with all of the city vested players, so certainly, the city has the right to talk to the council about proposals, and obviously, we have to get the council's input in terms of some of the financial pieces of this, so that always gets to happen. And then certainly, on the union side, the union does, you know, needs to make sure that whatever is negotiated is going to be approved, it's going to be ratified by the union membership, so. But the process is really, you know, that you have to stick to your sides, right, during this process, and so you cannot have members of the union ending around to councilors or to the city manager's office or to, you know, people who are not on the bargaining team, and vice versa, because it really does get, it breaks the trust and it gets at the sanctity of the process. And so that bargaining really does, for this to really work, it has to happen at the bargaining table, and that's a very important component of this whole process. And so I, you know, I talked a little bit about confidentiality and those kinds of things that occur during this bargaining process. Bargaining meetings are not in public for that reading, for that reason, right? And as I think I mentioned, attendance is limited to those who are the designated bargaining team members from each of the sides, and then, of course, we have the facilitators, who not only participate from FMCS, they not only participate in the training, but then they're with us the entire process, which is as facilitators and trying to keep the discussion going and helping the parties to, to move to the middle on all of the issues that have been raised. City staff will provide data for decision-making, and over the years, the city has done a great job at coming up with a financial model that, and we share financial information, that's a really important point. So all of the modeling that occurs through the financial, the financial modeling, that is an agreed model, and the local is in agreement with it, and so we funnel everything through there, so that everybody's working off of the same numbers and having the same understanding. In traditional bargaining, it doesn't really work that way, and it's part of what makes it so difficult, when you can't even agree on what's your model and what does your costs look like. So that's, that's an important point in the process. You know, we refrain from public comments or any sidebar discussions during bargaining, because it's all about building that collaboration in the room. If approached by a local member to discuss bargaining issues, we think it's really important, you know, for any city staff or councilors who are part of this process, and just as the union would tell their members as well, the process has to happen in the room. And so to, it's important that everybody be directed to the process and to the bargaining room in order to resolve any, any issues that might happen. And we would ask that, to the extent that you, you get any requests from, from any members of the local, that those would be, certainly be directed to the city, so that they can be handled appropriately. And I think that's all we have, so. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I see none.
Okay. But I look forward to working with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have status of collective bargaining inquiry and proposed, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm ready to begin the presentation that you're about, that you're introducing, Mayor, thank you.
Next is the status of collective bargaining inquiry and proposed collective bargaining ordinance for police officers. Mr. Frankel?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilors. I'm pleased to follow up with Ms. Callaway's, on her presentation outlining how the process has worked for our firefighters. As council is aware, our police officers inquired in June of 2021 if they, there would be a possibility of collective bargaining offered to them, and in July of 2021, council adopted a resolution directing staff to engage with the police department and identify ways of addressing concerns of all involved. So that process started, and today, having been informed along the way by direction from city council, we have prepared an ordinance that is modeled after the firefighters' collective bargaining ordinance, and the proposed ordinance would extend to police officers the same rights to bargain collectively, and as Ms. Callaway describes the structure, it would carry forward for the police officers as well. So the police officers would be afforded the opportunity to vote to identify an organization with which they would like to affiliate and which then bargain on their behalf. That organization could then make a demand for collective bargaining. There would then be a process set forth where city management would engage in collective bargaining with the representatives of the police employees. Ideally, that would occur in an interest-based manner, as Ms. Callaway has described for the firefighters, that is built into the ordinance as an option, if it's possible. I think it would be fair to say it would be the city's preference to engage, because we have had success with that method. The proposed agreement would then be put forth to city council for consideration, and if we reached an impasse and we're not able to reach an agreement, the same methods of resolving the impasse would be present for our police employees, as our, for our fire employees, and that would include a non-binding arbitration, and with the possibility of then sending a question to the voters, for the voters to make the decision. So the ordinance is attached to tonight's agenda packet, and there is a comparison version, so that you can see how it differs from the fire ordinance. That's the second document in this agenda item. So you can see that the edits are relatively minor, and they are addressed in a way to tailor the ordinance for the police employees and ensure that, you know, that police-specific needs are addressed, that the nature of the equipment that is involved would be tailored for police employees, that the bargaining unit be defined in such a way that is, would fit the police structure, as opposed to the fire structure, which differs. And I'm just confirming, it would really provide the same framework, and I think that staff's position and recommendation would be that council consider adopting a very similar structure, so that we have equity in terms of how we deal with our employees as a city, that our employee groups have the same sorts of collective bargaining rights, so that we don't, you know, create conflict between employee groups. So the draft that's before you, it does follow that, that model. I think it's also important to recognize that the draft has been shared with representatives from the Fraternal Order of Police, and it's our understanding that they are supportive of council moving forward with the draft, as it has been presented. So I think that the chief is here, obviously, Chief Hobart has been instrumental in development of this, and for the oversights, I apologize that I didn't have all the details. If the chief would like to jump in and offer additional details that I may have overlooked, we're all here to answer your questions as well, and make sure that we have the ordinance in a state that is acceptable, and if so, we would like to know if staff should put it forth for a first reading on an upcoming city council agenda.
Chief?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, City Attorney Frankel, thank you. He gave a great overview, I don't really have anything to add as far as that goes, but do confirm what he is stating about working with the David Coto, who's the president of the Westminster FOP, and he was supportive of this moving forward.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I greatly appreciate the side-by-side comparison. It's just cleaned up of language and addresses up to sergeant level, so that was one thing that I was looking for on there, but on the section there, as far as, since it's a new collective bargaining, we feel it's reasonable dates to have the authority by April 1st and then bargaining by June 1st. Those are pretty reasonable deadlines, we feel.
Those dates, I believe, were selected intentionally to facilitate negotiations this year, if that was the desire of our employees in the police department, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Frankel, for the overview, and City Manager Andrews and Chief Hobart for all your work on this. I know this has been, as you've shared, been going on for some time, so I'm pleased to see this come forward and that all parties agree to what you've come up with, and that it is so in line with what we do with the firefighters, because I've had the luck of being here when we voted on that first one and watching that process go through, and have to say, as somebody who was skeptical in front of it, it seems like it's a very well thought-out, used process. So I certainly am in favor of this, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that was put into it.
Having been on the inside of negotiations four times, I have been part of collective bargaining, and I've been a part of the interest-based bargaining, and I don't know how they're going to choose, but I hope that they see the value in interest-based, because it's totally different than collective bargaining, and it's no surprise to me that it works so well with the fire department. I believe it would work great with the police, because your concerns are our concerns, and I believe both sides would work to good solutions. So I don't know how that gets chosen, but I would encourage that. I'm excited we're on our way, possibly. They've been asking for one. Anything else? Counselor Nubella? Anything?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm in support of it as well. I'm glad to see that it's very similar in structure to the fire agreement, and I would, I definitely would underline the mayor's desire to see interest-based bargaining, because, yeah, I think it's, would be a positive step forward for everybody working together, so.
Thanks. Seeing nothing else, thanks for being with us tonight and taking time. Sorry we were late getting out of our first executive session.
Glad to be here.
And, yes?
And then, Mayor, if I could, just a question as to next steps. Would it be acceptable for city council and staff were to put this on for a first reading in its form as presented tonight?
I will poll the council. Counselor Baker? Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselors Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Counselor Nubella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so. Bring it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, do we need an executive session?
No, it was a placeholder, if needed, if questions came up, that would help with an exec session, but if otherwise not needed?
Good job.
Pass on it.
That's almost as good as the no masks. Next, that brings us to presentation on the 2022 Regional Homeless Overview and Next Steps. Thanks to all of you who came for the ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce our Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries, Tomas Mishler, and turn it over to him to lead the presentation tonight on regional, our participation in regional homelessness initiatives and seek council direction on some key efforts that are underway, and again, noting that we will be coming back to council to talk about our local work in this area as well, but tonight, we really wanted to craft that regional context, because there are some things that we want to get moving on regionally.
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you and welcome. I don't think your microphone's on.
First, first time, right? Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city councilors. My name is Tomas Mishler and I am the very happy Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And I'm very pleased to be able to offer you this presentation on our work to support the unhoused individuals in our community. We're working to really enhance the quality of life for everyone in Westminster. And Kate Scarborough, she's the Senior Management Analyst charged with overseeing our work with, in this field. She'll, she's going to lead the discussion this evening. I wanted to let you know I'm personally familiar with this topic, having served with a faith-based organization in downtown Philadelphia, where my family and I spent a year volunteering as live-in staff with 14 mentally ill homeless women. I later established a landscape training program for homeless men and women to teach them skills and help them gain employment. And then most recently, as the CEO of the Balboa Park Conservancy, I had the opportunity to partner with the San Diego Regional Partnership for Homelessness to address the needs of the 600 unhoused individuals that live in Balboa Park. So I do have a personal interest and commitment to this as well. Homelessness, I guess this, it really is an issue that transcends the resources of any one community. And it requires a regional approach, no question about that. And but it's really much like the approach that has been already adopted here in Westminster. And Kate is going to describe to you really where we're at right now in that process. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Kate?
We can't hear you. You see your lips moving.
Hello. Thank you very much for your patience while we worked that out. I'm glad to join you tonight, albeit virtually. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city councilors, what is occurring right now and seek your direction on regional homelessness initiatives. I want to first start by acknowledging that there are certainly a lot, a host of local concerns that city staff recognize and are working toward addressing, most notably by having a homeless navigator go out and meet people where they are staying, connecting them to housing. And in fact, we've housed over 30 people while we've had a navigator in the last, a little bit over a year. And we are also having city staff go out and monitor the campsites to check on health and safety so that the community members living there, as well as those surrounding the area, are definitely living in safe conditions. And we're not seeing the sites deteriorate and the people's health deteriorate. So we acknowledge that we will, we are tentatively scheduled to come back to discuss local options within our own boundaries on the study session on March 21st. And at that time, we'll address that. In the meantime, we do have three major regional initiatives that we wanted to get your feedback on. Next slide, please. Essentially, the three major directives that we're looking for from you are, should we continue to pursue our partnership with the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, Built for Zero Campaign, to reduce veterans homelessness? It does take staff time and commitment. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like here in a minute. Also, at the same time, Adams County and Broomfield Counties are proposing a memorandum of understanding for jurisdictional collaboration specifically surrounding homelessness so that we regularly have all jurisdictions across Adams County and Broomfield County at the table at the same time discussing regional solutions. And thirdly, we have the Jefferson County Housing Navigation Center that some of you may be familiar with. It's been work that's been underway for close to a year now. And I'll get a little bit more into that here in just a moment. First, I want to step back and on the next slide, please, share with you the overall context of what we're seeing with homelessness in the region. Across the nation, every year, the Department of Urban Development requires that any, any entity wanting to receive funding, federal funding to address homelessness, literal homelessness, meaning people living outdoors, in vehicles or in places not intended for human habitation, or places paid for by agencies such as shelters, conduct an annual census of people meeting that criteria. And in the Denver metro area, in the final 10 days of January, there's always a day selected where that night we go out as volunteers across the community and try to connect with everyone staying outdoors, as well as do a regional data pull from the homeless shelters across the region to determine, how many people do we have experiencing literal homelessness in the area? In the seven counties that are served by the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, which is Adams, Arapahoe, Boulder, Broomfield, Denver, Jefferson County, and Douglas County as well, in 2020, the point in time annual census revealed that we had 6,104 people experiencing literal homelessness in those seven counties. This slide shows you that some people, that about roughly a third of those people were unsheltered and two-thirds were sheltered or in transitional housing. It also identifies that there were 420 families that included 1,446 people experiencing homelessness on that specific night. The reason that I'm using the 2020 data, and if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, I'd appreciate it, is that that gives us trend data that we can utilize. As you can see, unfortunately, the numbers have steadily risen as housing costs in the Denver metro area have risen. So housing costs do dictate and are correlated to levels of homelessness that we see across the nation. In nations where we have really high-cost housing markets with limited housing supply, we do see a rise in homelessness. And that's what we've been seeing in the Denver metro area over close to the last decade now. However, stepping back to just 2018, we've seen a steady rise in homelessness. The reason I'm not using the 2021 point in time data is that that year, because of COVID, we did not have volunteers go out and meet people where they were living outdoors. Instead, we relied on only the sheltered data pull. So we only have sheltered data for that night in January 2021. On that night, 5,530 people were living in shelter in the Denver metro area, which is still an amount higher than both sheltered and unsheltered in 2018. So we know that there's definitely been a rise in homelessness. The 2022 point in time was conducted two weeks ago on this night and the next day. We will have that data available. It's both a sheltered and unsheltered count. That data will be available. The Metro Denver Homeless Initiative is aiming for March, for May rather, and we may see it in June. But somewhere in late spring, early summer, we generally do see that data come out. It takes some time to deduplicate, as you might imagine. We want to make sure we're not counting people multiple times. Next slide, please. The point in time data is also broken down and only available on a county-wide basis. So in 2020, there were close to 1,000 people living in both Adams and Jefferson County experiencing literal homelessness on that single night in January. Of those, the population percentage of Westminster between both counties means roughly 110 people were experiencing literal homelessness on January 27th, 2020. The unsheltered count, I should say, is a known undercount, too. As you might imagine, it's all but impossible to connect with everybody living in every space on a, in a single 24-hour period. But it is a consistent methodology across years and that's why we're able to use it as trend data. I'm going to ask that we go to the next slide so that we can discuss the first regional initiative that I'd like to put forth tonight. It is the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, Built for Zero Initiative, which is actually part of a nationwide collaborative. 90 communities across the United States, at last count, were participating in this initiative. The idea is that each region select a target population, in this case, the veterans, to bring together case managers across the region on a weekly basis after building a by-name list and identifying the needs of every veteran living outdoors or in shelter or in places not intended for human habitation in order to identify their needs for housing and get them into housing as quickly as possible. For the most part, this program works very well. The Veterans Administration is at the table. Case managers from all of the nonprofits and the jurisdictions are also at the table. Anyone who works closely with a particular veteran is there to advocate on behalf of that veteran and at the same time, match them up to what type of housing they need and what part of town where they already might have some level of personal supports. So this initiative, in the first, it was basically, MDHI introduced this as a regional approach in March of last year. By late summer, the weekly case conferencing calls commenced across the various counties. And we saw a 15% reduction in veterans homelessness by the end of 2021. My understanding is that the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative is going to be sending out invitations to all of the elected officials across all of the seven counties to have a convening again in the next few months, once we know what date works for the governor's office and most of the major metro mayors, to be able to gather together and discuss how it's working, whether we need to change the overall approach and identify more resources. But I wanted to make you aware that this invitation will be coming in the next few weeks and that makes sure that this is something that is of interest to you as elected officials in participating in. Because while it is largely a staff commitment, it does sound as if there's going to be at least an annual regional convening for elected officials for it as well.
Would you like to see if there's questions first and then poll to see what we would like for you to continue or not continue with?
Absolutely. That works best for you.
Any questions on this issue? Oh, Sarah. I'm looking at an empty seat and they're yelling, Sarah, Sarah.
Hi, Kate. I am wondering about the, is Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, are they tracking the success over time? So if they were able to reduce the 15, you know, by 15% the homeless veteran population, do we know if that was successful into next year?
That's exactly what they're doing. Thank you for that question and chance to elaborate. In fact, they're keeping a by-name list on a countywide level and working with the Veterans Administration on the entire list. And so, name by name, person by person, people are being identified for the housing that best meets their needs. And then we're watching that list go down while at the same time, street outreach workers are continuing to make contact with veterans who are, who are newly experiencing homelessness or veterans who have reached out to different service agencies in need of assistance. So it's, it's a constant flow, but it's real-time data that's updated on at least a weekly basis and oftentimes a daily basis. So that we do know that the idea is that as the numbers go down of the veterans experiencing homelessness, the idea is to build the housing capacity at the same time, to get the right types of vouchers that meet people's needs, to find the locations that best meet people's needs. And so we're working on it on both fronts, both on a people-centric basis, but also making sure that the housing that they're connected to will actually support them in the way they need and that they can retain housing. And then the idea is, once we have a flow going where we have fewer veterans experiencing homelessness than we're able to get housed, then we identify the next target population. Since we're only into the first few months of this, we're a ways away from that. But it's, it's definitely going down in the right direction when the rest of the sub-populations of people experiencing homelessness have definitely been rising from what we are hearing in all sorts of ways. Thank you.
And Kate, will there be a way, because sometimes citizens call us and they know of a veteran or they've run into somebody and they know they need help. Will there be a way that citizens can share there's a person in need?
Absolutely. We are working on getting an access Westminster request in so that that access Westminster request isn't the right word. Whatever the proper terminology is, the field that we'd be able to direct people to if somebody does know of a veteran who's in need.
Any other questions? I will poll council if they would like to support this issue. Counselor Baker?
I think this whole homeless issue needs much more investigation. I do not view that all unhoused people are broken. I think for some, it is a lifestyle choice. That choice needs to be respected. But at the same time, as citizens of our society, we owe a duty to everyone else in our society. And when individuals abuse our parks, abuse our public streets, abuse our roads, do not practice proper hygiene, they are hurting the rest of us. And sometimes in the conversation of the unhoused, the harm that's done to the population as a whole is overlooked, is ignored, is excused. And if we're really going to have a fair discussion, I think that needs a part of it. So what is your specific question, Mayor?
The question tonight is, does city council want to continue its support for the Built for Zero Campaign to alleviate homelessness among veterans?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
I absolutely concur with my, what my colleague just said as far as overall process. I do believe that if we have a readily identifiable group with metrics and we're tracking by person, then this very specific plan has value.
Counselor Emmens?
I concur with my colleagues.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Same.
Counselor Numbella?
Yeah, I do, too. I was just gonna ask Kate Scarborough, if you could, can you remind me? I know somewhere in the presentation you had the number of folks that were considered more of the perpetual homeless population. Just chronically, yeah, sorry.
Yes, the chronically homeless population are people who experience homelessness for length of more than a year or more than a year over the course of a four-year period and cumulatively. And so they usually total somewhere in the general vicinity of around a third of the total homeless population. So in the case of the 2020 data, it's a little bit close to around 2,000 people in the Denver metro area in the seven counties who are chronically homeless. I am understanding that that is shifting. We are having data that is showing that we are having an increasing number of newly homeless.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. But yes, I do support this.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes, I do support it and just want to thank you, Kate, and the rest of staff for working with the Metro Denver area on this. It's very important. I believe we need to take care of our most vulnerable and I'm happy to see this. Thank you.
And I agree and know what they've been working on with the veterans. And I know that when we start looking at what we can do and individually in each of our towns, that's going to be important. I know regionally, as a partnership, it's important so that we're just not shifting people from place to place and it's the same people. So that's an important reason for partnership. But no, I just lost my train of thought of what I was thinking. Yeah. Oh, but today, I don't know what Mayor Kaufman said out in Aurora, but my husband came home listening on the radio and he said, "Do you know what Aurora's doing? You've got to listen to this." And I had been working on machine embroidery stuff for clients all day. So I didn't even have a radio on. I was focused on that. So I don't know, as, as each of these cities and areas work on this... So I don't know, as each of these cities and areas work on this, I know there's been some good data out there, there's things that have been happening, so we don't have to reinvent anything, but I would really love to see what his proposal is and what they're working on in Aurora. But, so you've got that one taken care of, so we're all yes?
Okay. Thank you. Next slide, please. The next regional collaboration that's underway is a proposal from Adams and Brumfield Counties to collaborate together to strengthen regional collaboration and ensure that all of the jurisdictions are at the table over the next six years. The proposed MOU is intended to strengthen regional collaboration by improving the outcomes for people experiencing homelessness, as well as improving the quality of life for the people surrounding them by finding them housing and getting them off the streets and out of the parks. One of the goals around doing that would be to share data across all of the jurisdictions. Right now, most of the Adams County jurisdictions are not directly plugged into the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative software data that our homeless navigator uses. And so consequently, there's not a data sharing agreement, and this would bridge that gap for those jurisdictions that aren't able to be fortunate enough to have a navigator or street outreach position. And then ideally, over time, be able to identify how to best use the federal funds that are available, especially through the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as identifying the needs and locations where services are needed to be able to transition people out of homelessness, because there is a severe lack of options outside of Aurora in Adams County. There are three, actually now there's only two, family shelters that are very, have very small capacity. And there's the emergency shelter that's operated by Adams County with partnership with Almost Home, a nonprofit organization working out of Brighton, and all of the jurisdictions. And aside from that, there is no place to send anybody in Adams County. So this is a severe lack of options that are available for people of places to go. So over time, those solutions would be brought before each city council across both counties to be able to make decisions on cost-sharing agreements once the solutions are identified. In the meantime, the conversation really needs to get seriously underway, and this is what that memorandum of understanding would allow, which interim city manager Andrews would be able to assign because there is no financial component to it, as long as city council is supportive. That's what we're here to find tonight.
Kate, one of my thoughts when I was reading this, and your whole presentation was great and in-depth, so thank you. I love the Growing Home method that looks at strengthening people so that they can eventually get out on their own. And so are those, some of the components that we're looking at so that people can be productive on their own and the right resources are brought in to help with if they don't know how to apply for a job, if they don't know job interviews, if, all of those things as they identify what the needs are of each person, are those some of the things being thought about or is that too early to know?
We have not gotten that specific, but I can tell you that that is generally considered to be a best practice. It's known as essentially having the lightest touch needed, providing, identifying the supports that are needed to get someone to sustainability. And that's one thing that Growing Home does, it's one thing that Almost Home does, it's one thing that Access Housing does, Family Tree does as well. There's also the recognition that there's a certain segment of the population experiencing homelessness that for various physical and/or mental health disorder reasons will not be able to achieve their own sustainability. And so it's what are the supports that look like long-term for them? And those types of needs are generally beyond the scope of what Growing Home has done, but I, in the past, generally though, it is really looking for what's the lightest intervention to provide the strongest support. And providing that and not going above and beyond, but providing exactly what's needed so that they can transition these next steps on their own.
And with Growing Home, they used to have family, the different churches took turns where they could sleep at night, the kids went to school, parents were working, and what happened to that program?
The Family Canopy Program did shut down in late 2019. Faith-based organizations that were housing the families, that rotation, are you able to hear me? You're, okay. The faith-based organizations that were housing, those community members were not, were not necessarily staying in places that were safe for them to stay in terms of fire code, in terms of building safety, they were in buildings that weren't designed for residential sleeping, and it was placing families at risk. And so increasingly, that wasn't a viable option without a lot of expenditures on the part of the churches and the faith-based organizations, assuming additional insurance liability. I will say though, Cold Weather Care and Family Promise were operating similar shelters across the Denver metro region, and they wound up shutting down with COVID because congregate sheltering did not become safe. I am hearing that some of them are looking at doing so again, offering congregate sheltering again in church spaces. That fire marshals have approved, the building code offices have approved, starting in fall of 2020, fall of 2022, pardon me, I forgot what year we were in for just a moment. So that's the plan, but at this time, not all of them are going to be able to get up and operational again. A lot of the volunteers stopped volunteering and just because of a fear of contracting COVID originally, but also it became increasingly obvious that the faith-based organizations were doing some pretty heavy lifting, and it took some very dedicated volunteers. And we were hearing even prior to COVID that most of the volunteers were aging to the extent that physically it was becoming a really difficult role for them to intervene and play.
And just because you have been part of Westy Cares and you know, even for us, for the last eight years, trying to get approval or the churches that would open their doors on the severe cold nights so people don't freeze and on the very hot days, to be able to come in and just be in the cool, it all comes down to codes. So I just want us to think about, if we really want to make some changes, how do we do it without millions of dollars having to be spent in the name of helping people? So that's my biggest frustration is, especially for those little pieces of it's minus four tonight and we have people that would open their doors, but because of insurance, because maybe they don't have the sprinkler system, maybe they don't have ADA toilets, all of these things that come at us of why they can't. And then if there is a fire, who's gonna be liable? Well, who's gonna be liable for the person, in my mind, that freezes to death because we didn't take action? So I'm just venting my frustration, you've heard it before, but sometimes we get in our own way, and I understand codes, but sometimes they're the excuse of why we can't do things. Any other comments? I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Counselor Numala.
Okay, thanks. I agree, sometimes it would be good to be able to look at what are, what barriers in the code there may be that we can figure out how to, I don't know, work with in order to have more opportunities. I also still remember maybe a little too well, you know, kind of informal homeless kind of living encampment in Oakland and that burned down and killed a lot of people that were living in a space that wasn't allowed for them. So that's the other side of it that we obviously want to avoid. My gosh, what was my question? My other question was, what is the timeline for, I'm totally supportive of putting effort towards this, I'm just kind of curious to know the commitment from staff and just the timeline, are they, what are they looking at having a sort of dedicated plan of action?
They already have, in fact, Adams County drafted a action plan very broadly based to address homelessness in mid-2021. So they have an overall plan. The conversation that is going to be taking place if we move forward with this is how can all the jurisdictions contribute, work together, make sure that we're doing, we're not duplicating efforts, we're not putting resources where they aren't needed, we are identifying where they are needed, that we are balancing the needs of the people experiencing homelessness along with those of the greater community. The memorandum is, we have a final draft, if you will, that needs to be, go through all of the city attorney's offices across all of jurisdictions, and Adams County would like to have this signed sooner rather than later, ideally by the end of the first quarter. And at the same time, they are also proposing having an elected official convening. In fact, Adams County staff members are going before the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow to ask what the general timeline is that would work best for the Board of County Commissioners in reaching out to all of the city councils across the jurisdiction to have that more robust conversation of how do we tackle this as an entire county instead of, as the mayor said, moving people from one place to another without having options.
Okay. Here.
Do you have more on this one or would you like me to poll the council?
Polling the council sounds wonderful to me. I'm happy to answer other questions.
Counselor Yazzadi?
Just real quick, wanted to ask, why just Adams and Brumfield? Where's Jeffco on this?
That's the next slide, actually.
Okay.
Jefferson County is a few years ahead of where we are in Adams County in terms of these discussions. So we're a little further ahead in that county, and we wanted to seize that moment instead of pausing there and waiting for the other counties to catch up. So we're all coming at this from different angles, but we're getting to the same place in the end.
So Counselor Yazzadi, do you support partnering with Adams and city and county of Brumfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Numala?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
I'd like to include, there's a dark side to homelessness that has to also be recognized and addressed. There are predators, there are drug abusers, there are the mentally ill, there are alcoholics, there are irresponsible people. And if we make a plan that only looks at the easy cases, it's not a complete plan. And as long as this doesn't really financially obligate us, yes?
And I'm a yes. So continue to your third request.
Okay. Thank you. So in Jefferson County, as I mentioned a little earlier, we are a little ahead just because there the jurisdictions had committed in 2016 to making homelessness a priority for that county. It was in late 2016, and by the middle of 2017, each jurisdiction had appointed a staff member who would meet to discuss options. Out of that came a number of different initiatives, including our regional homeless navigators, of which Westminster has one. And accordingly, we are working with all jurisdictions through the navigator program to get people housed. And we're basing that on data that is obtained through a series of surveys made available to us from the federal government, identifying those who have comorbidities, including substance use treatment needs, other health issues, and behavioral health issues, including mental health, and those are the people getting housed first. They're also the people at greatest risk of dying while they're living outdoors. So that's the approach Jefferson County has taken over the last couple of years. We are seeing success with that. We'd like to see more success with that, we'd like to get more people housed, so that way we have fewer people living outdoors and causing all of these concerns. Along those lines, the proposal that has been put forth by Jefferson County is to use the $3.4 million provided through the American Rescue Plan Act to the county itself, not to local jurisdictions, but we can talk about what other financing might be needed in order to build two housing navigation centers in Jefferson County. Those housing navigation centers would include, each would include 150 permanent supportive housing units that would finance themselves to the use of housing vouchers, a resource center that operates 24/7, 365 days a year, so that you don't see people being released onto the streets if they don't have a place to go, and also shelter beds, including additional shelter beds for emergency sheltering. Next slide, please. The two locations that are being identified, generally speaking, for the housing navigation centers in Jefferson County would be in, likely in Arvada and likely in Lakewood. And that's because in 2019, we conducted the Jefferson County Comprehensive Homeless Count to identify on a municipal level where people were who met the definition of homelessness in Jefferson County. Where were they staying the night? And what we found is almost 50% of people in Jefferson County were spending the night in Lakewood, and almost another 20% were spending the night in Arvada. And those two cities also have qualified census tracts. Those are the spots on the map that are in purple that allow us to use as governments' federal dollars like community development block grant dollars in order to build in those areas and leverage additional tax credits from the state of Colorado. It would lower the overall cost of building such sites, and we don't yet have final costs. Blue Line Development was brought on as the developer in November of 2021, and the RFP for service providers for the sites just closed on Friday. So it's moving forward. And Arvada has two sites within it that are very closely located, so it would actually be a campus setting. One of the buildings would have 75 permanent supportive housing units on it, and the other would have another 75 permanent supportive housing units, as well as the housing navigation center and the emergency beds. So we don't yet know what the final costs are. We do know that that will be coming soon. The Arvada sites need to be secured in time for an August of 2022 application for low-income housing tax credits. Once we do have the costs, we would bring that back to council for your consideration of what that intergovernmental agreement looks like and whether we could sign on to it. The question tonight is, are you willing to have staff continue to work toward this as a solution? It is looking like the Lakewood sites have been harder to identify, and so that will likely come in a Phase Two in 2023's application process with the state.
Counselor Numala?
Sorry. Okay, just a few questions on this one. If we, how does it work with, there's these percentages of where people are experiencing homelessness, but in terms of our participation in an ability to get residents into these facilities, do we have some type of percentage breakdown? How is that decided?
If we're using housing tax credits from the state of Colorado, and they would provide up to 50% of the vouchers for the housing, then we are not able to have geographic preference, meaning that no Jefferson County preference would be able to be given for those 50% of vouchers. However, if the housing authorities in Jefferson County, and there are three of them, provide local Jefferson County housing vouchers, then we would be able to get Jefferson County residents or people who had Jefferson County residents... then we would be able to get Jefferson County residents or people who had Jefferson County residents, residents as their last permanent address into these housing units. Regardless of whether or not they're able to, everybody's able to get into the housing units, the navigators will be, that we have across the region, across the county, would be able to get people into the shelter beds and into additional stabilization supports at that facility in order to get housed sooner rather than later. Right now, while working with people living outdoors, it's more of a challenge than it needs to be if we had a permanent location that they could be while, and I shouldn't use the word permanent, a location where they could be stabilized while the navigators know where to reach them and be able to get them to the next step to be able to find other housing outside of those particular units.
So that's, yeah, that's my question about these. One, I should just say, I am excited that this is happening and that efforts are being put towards providing this range of offerings. I guess just around that. It seems like, so I'm, I'm looking at 30 to 50%, you know, in those projects that are trying to use Lytech, but I'm also hearing you talk about vouchers. And so I'm just trying to differentiate between, are we expanding at all any of our, the number of vouchers that we would have available to people searching for that 0 to 30% AMI?
That's something the housing authorities are working on, yes.
Okay. And then when you were talking about having people have a place to kind of stay while you stabilize them, it seems like there's only like an overnight shelter and then these more longer term units. So is there anything in between, like a temporary housing option, a month or whatever it takes to get people?
There is the 50 emergency shelter beds at each location, the Arvada and the Lakewood locations. And I should say likely locations. You never know, we might have land donated to us somewhere in one of the other jurisdictions that's too good to pass up that, that works for other logistic reasons. But we would be able, those emergency shelter beds are actually longer term emergency shelter beds where they could stay for several weeks at a time while we're getting them housed. Right now, we're using hotels for that purpose and it is a costly alternative.
Right. Okay. And did they accommodate families? I feel like there's more.
Some of these, yes, there will be both chronically homeless individuals as well as families. And the exact breakdown of how that works out depends on the plot of lands and, and how they can be developed. But there will be multifamily units in here too. Units intended for more than a single individual, I should say.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So I don't see any other questions, but Counselor Numella, are you willing for us to continue to move forward with Jefferson County's partnerships?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demop?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
And I'm okay. So now you've got all three. Do you need anything else? Oh, Counselor, Mayor Protem?
I wanted to wait till you got through all this because my question isn't necessarily on the housing part of homelessness, as funny as that might sound. For some time now, I've asked about, and I, I do believe in the regional approach because I think that if you're going to make a dent in the situation in Colorado, it has to be a regional approach. So you're not chasing people back and forth between municipalities because that's the way that, that goes. If anybody who's lived in the city long enough, who was around when they used to cruise the mall, that's what they used to do with us. They chased us from Arvada to Westminster and back to Arvada. And that's the way that goes. So with that being said, I do, it was experienced. They never caught me though. With all seriousness, you, we had talked before about the model that is in New Mexico and it's a different portion of this. And so this is more the sustainability and how we get people back on their feet. And I know Counselor Baker brings up some very good points that, you know, there is that population who doesn't, won't help. They've decided this is how they're going to live. And I think we need to be realistic about that. We need to also address things where those become community safety issues where we can within the confines of the law. But the other portion of this too, though, you know, is expanding upon the work that we've been doing with being the connector. I mean, so I'm just curious if we've done any looking at the New Mexico model as far as, you know, municipalities, we hire a lot of seasonal workers or a lot of different things. And, you know, every different municipality has those needs. So I'm just curious, and, and that was what I had seen in the New Mexico model that was shared with us by a constituent a couple of years back. And I watched the documentary that they did on it and I thought it was a neat model. So I'm just curious, along the lines of those kinds of things, what are we doing with our regional partners to try to find places where we can do, you know, day labor programs where people are starting to get that sense of dignity back? And because ultimately the studies have shown that's what helps people get back on their feet on top of, you know, that transitional housing. And the goal of having to free up those spaces so that, you know, the next person who's down on their luck might be able to, be able to participate and kind of get out of the cycle. The other portion of that, that I'm curious about is when we talk about the mental health and the substance abuse. Is there a regional approach with looking at how we get those kind of resources in front of people? Because I'll tell you, in the state of Colorado, whether you have insurance or not, those resources are hard to come by. So how are we trying to, or how regionally are our partners looking at those facets of this? Knowing that, you know, those are the, the harder nuts to crack, so to speak.
Great questions. And as for the day labor programs, that's something that I am planning, we are planning on including in the local options because there are some partners already engaging in that type of work. And it would make sense to leverage their relationships and contracts that they already have, learn the lessons from them on what has worked well, what hasn't worked well, and find ways forward that would work best for Westminster. And also understanding what resources we would need locally to provide those supports. Oftentimes, hiring a crew of seasonal employees who are living outdoors do require, does require some level of additional management and supervisory supports. So there would be some additional local requests likely to be needed from a staffing level to make that possible. That's certainly something we can consider and explore in the March conversation. As for mental health and substance use, as you say, they are more difficult situations. Oftentimes, housing people first has been found to stabilize people enough that they can actually start to adhere to a treatment program, which when they're living outdoors, they're frequently in literally survival mode, trying to figure out where their next meal is coming from. Are they going to be able to sleep for more than an hour here or an hour there? Where can they hide out? Where, where can they lie under the radar enough to be able to get some level of rest? So it, it is, it has been found to be a best practice, not just in the United States, but worldwide to practice housing first, which means you get people into housing first. And in terms of building up the supports and the capacity of the mental health and substance use treatment providers, I can tell you that Jefferson Center for Mental Health and Community Reach Center are doing their level headed best to find ways to get more staff in those professional support roles to be able to build capacity. And in fact, Jefferson Center is building a permanent supportive housing unit as part of the statewide toolkit in Lakewood to be able to have people housed who need onsite mental and substance use treatment. That site is anticipated to open. Last I heard, it's anticipated fall of 2023.
Great. One last thing that I'm curious about, and this is again, trying to stop the cycle from happening. And so I know one of the areas that, you know, my wife and I actually have put a lot of focus on in supporting organizations that look at this portion of the problem, and that is youth who are age out of foster care, you know, that don't have those support systems in place. Is there more emphasis being put on that regionally from our partners that you've seen? Understanding that a lot of times you might have those, especially actually you have those people aging out that might have some of those mental health problems, you know, as part of their upbringing or situations that they've been through. And, you know, they, so you mix that between not having the family support and maybe having some of those things that are undelved with. And then, you know, they age out and they end up on the streets. So is that something else that we're seeing some movement regionally on? I certainly would hope that we're encouraging movement on it, but.
We absolutely are. That was a conversation that I had with the Deputy Director of Maker Housing Partners several years back. And at that time, they hadn't committed to one particular, serving one particular, prioritizing one particular portion of the homeless population. But they wound up moving to prioritize children aging, youth aging out of the foster care system. And they opened at the time 13 affordable housing units that were designed to support, provide those levels of support that youth aging out of the foster care system do need. And they found that that, those 13 units were very effective in providing the supports needed and that they found that the youth were able to, in many instances, not all instances, but were able to move on to less intensive supportive housing. And so that opened up more opportunities and Maker said, this makes sense. We're going to open up even more housing units for this. So they are prioritizing youth aging out of the foster care system. That's our housing authority serving Adams County. And at the same time, on the Jefferson County side of the city, Power of Partnership, which is a faith based organization, an informal collaborative of all of the different faith based organizations across Jefferson County, for the last two years has been prioritizing providing supports for foster care parents so that the youth that they're fostering receive better supports while they're in the home without creating as many stresses on the foster care family and thereby building resiliency within the family unit to continue to support the foster care youth as they age out of the foster care system instead of just saying, well, you're 18 now, you're on your own, no matter what's going on in the world or where you are in your own personal life. So providing those additional supports that foster care families often need to be able to continue to foster and provide stabilization for the youth in foster care at an earlier stage and prevent them from getting to the point where they need those permanent supports as adults.
Great. So I want to also just take a second to thank you, Kate, for all the work that you've done. I've seen your program that you've been working on since I've been involved in the city and the expansive work that you've done to try to make a difference is very impressive. And I'm proud to say that you have, we have you on our staff and I know that we're, we're very lucky. And the other thing I wanted to, and this is more for City Manager Andrews, I want to also put support behind us looking at what are, what things in our city would stop faith based organizations from being able to reasonably house people. When I was very first on council, I went and visited in Thornton, one of the churches that was doing the cold care, cold shelter, whatever. And I'm getting the name wrong, but that program and what they were able to do there for those families, I think is, is pretty unique, especially because they were able to keep families together, get them through that short period and get them back on their feet. I just can't imagine that we couldn't do a better job here in the city by allowing churches who want to be able to participate or provide that kind of care to people who meet some sort of criteria that they put forward, us from stopping them. So I certainly am in support of what the mayor had brought up because I think that there's some opportunity that aren't being allowed because of code and it doesn't seem like it really makes sense, so.
I just wanted to share, we have many churches that have lots of land around them. And the church I go to in Broomfield, and Broomfield being one of our partners anyway, they had land and went to the City and County of Broomfield, gave their vision of what they saw. They built a nine apartment building with all of the neighbors, knowing the residents that were going to be there were aged out, youth through the foster care system. And we have our first five residents. And they has taken many partnerships because much like growing home, we're setting them up for success. And our own Westminster Rotary Club was wonderful enough to allow me to pick up five laptops for those residents and promised me the rest when we get the rest of our residents. So it does take lots of partnerships, but sometimes we have to reimagine what we, what we have and what's maybe sitting there and what can we do? And that isn't just us as a city, but it's all the partners within the city, whether it's community gardens and people can grow their gardens or we have enough room to house people and build some things. That would be great. So anyway, it's a, we're excited about it. And because of HIPAA laws and everything, I have no clue who's living over there. Only pastor has gotten to meet people and he tells us they're wonderful young folks. So it's just different ways that people can look at things. And I would encourage, if our, any of our churches have that land, that they're not sure what to do with it and would come up with such a proposal for any one of these kinds of needs, that we would be willing to at least have conversation and see what kind of partnerships we can do for them too. Was I in the middle? Have I gone through everybody? Do you have all three of your yeses yet? Did we do that?
I do, thank you.
Okay. We got busy chatting and so I forgot. Counselor Emmons?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make note and appreciate the discussion tonight. And I'm thankful that we're looking at this and continuing to make this a priority because I know that we've all heard as a council, the concerns from our residents about looking into this and addressing it within our community. And like Mayor Protem said, it's, it's a regional effort that needs to take place along with what the mayor said is partnerships involved with that. But I also, and I know it's not a decision for council tonight, but I also don't want it to get lost is that I would like us to continue to work with our lobbyist and our policy analyst team to ensure that the laws at the state level and the federal level aren't having a cause and effect to create potentially more homelessness. And so I want that to be at the forefront too, because I, I think that that matters when we look at how policies affect our community. So I'd like that to continue to be at the forefront of what we, what we look at, what we serve. So thank you for the presentation and the discussion.
I'll let you have the last. Ms. Kate, do you have anything else?
I just wanted to, the next slide, the two slides from now is, one more, please. Just reiterate the next steps. My understanding is you will be invited to elected official meetings from the Metro Denver Bolt for Zero Initiative, Adams County and Broomfield as well. And then Jefferson County holds quarterly meetings in which homelessness is discussed. The next one is scheduled on March 3rd, Thursday, March 3rd. So those are, and then as I mentioned, and as we've discussed throughout this presentation, we do have a tentative scheduled date, assuming that there's no, no more pressing business to prevent it from going forward on March 21st, we'll be bringing forth local options to have a discussion about many of the issues you've all raised tonight. And I really thank you all very much for your insights and I look forward to continuing the discussion. So the next slide is a thank you and how to contact us if you need to.
Thank you. And sorry, we kept you a little later tonight, but thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to participation in Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition lobbying contract. I don't know when that disappeared from us participating, but I participate in that group. And my values are if you participate in a group, you should pay your fair share. And it is around $10,000. I also believe, I don't know, I've offered up. I will never be going to a US Mayor's Conference because that's really for strong mayors and for much larger cities than us. So if we are paying dues to that, I would immediately say, don't pay those dues because if I have anything to say about it, I wouldn't be attending anyway. But this is here. We would never have the managed lanes on US 36 if it wasn't for that coalition. We would never have the managed lanes on US 36 if it wasn't for that coalition. And the Longmonts, the Erie's, the Boulders, the outline areas that don't touch US 36 have paid and helped us get some of the things we want. In the future, they're looking at the diagonal, they're looking at 287 as a roadway and Highway seven with different improvements. Our people, I go on those roads, so I know our citizens do, too. And I know if you don't have a federal lobbyist, you won't get far because they, they're in town in DC and they can get to the places they need to as things are happening. Get us on a conference call if needed. And at times, we've flown back there for our own lobbying. But I know that this coalition gets things done because we are a coalition, and your congressmen look at that, and, and we're not working by ourselves. And with, I know we have a federal lobbyist, but just understand, to make use of that federal lobbyist, I don't care if it's Adams or Jeffco, you have to have that partnership and they have to buy into what we want done, or it won't get done. So the coalition is critical, and we have had that since 1999. And when we started getting these lobbyists to get things done, we all fair shared it. And my belief is, if we're going to be part of this coalition, we pay our way. So I'll just take a quick poll and see where we're at so that we can continue. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you did a great job. I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna keep count here.
Okay, you keep count. Councilor Baker?
I'm all for participating, but I am completely against Lexus Lane. Public transportation on public streets should be free for all comers. And to have these lanes on both I-25, and the worst ones are on I, on US 36, because on that one, we turn it over to a private enterprise for 50 years? No, that was a huge mistake. Lobbying for free access roads, I'm all in.
So what's your answer here?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Qualified. Yes.
Counselor Emmons. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Nammella?
Can I qualify mine, too? There was just one little note in there regarding the Fast Tracks rail line and on the stations identified in the EIS. And I know that it does not, the EIS did not include Itty and Sheridan and the potential ridership that we would have at that location in comparison to, I believe it was Church Ranch. I would just want to make sure that we're, we have, you know, as we're advocating for that, that we're not just literally by the book with the EIS, that we're thinking about what we've planned for the community.
Well, and I was there during that time, and the coalition took a vote to allow us to have that station. It means we have to do more because it wasn't an EIS station, and we know our obligations. But you know that I will be a bulldog for both of the stations we have left, and that is our 88th and also Walnut Creek.
Awesome. Okay, then yes. Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Does that mean you're gonna kill the other thing she brought up, too?
Oh, the Metro Mayor?
Yeah.
Or no, the U.S. Mayors.
Sorry, I didn't, I wasn't clear if that was something we were paying into or not. She said if we were paying into it, don't, but.
Staff has been looking, I don't have a, but I will go.
You can just send us an email through.
Yeah.
Jody.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Sorry to make you work so late. I, I thought I was the only one that had the ass, sorry. That brings us to, they said water rates isn't on our agenda for presentations. Is that?
I'm sorry, Mayor. There was an info packet on there also, but also, we wanted to inform our colleagues that the proposal that we've been working on, we are going to ask to bring that forward for discussion for next week's full council meeting.
Did you want to go over it tonight? Or just to tell us, or?
Well, it, it wasn't agendized to be able to do that, though. But we just, we wanted to inform you that that's going to be coming forward.
Okay, so you're just telling the public it's coming?
Yes. Okay, like, and everybody on council got a copy of it. And it was really a wonderful, I mean, the collaboration between the staff and listening to their needs and listening to their warnings and being, so we're like excited that this will be up for first reading ordinance on the 14th. Just tremendous.
So you're telling people to stay tuned next week?
That next week it becomes real.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues, Counselor Baker and Counselor Seymour, for working so diligently and hard on this. But I also have a concern that I've expressed to both as far as understanding how we got to the numbers, understanding the processes behind it. I think for all intents and purposes, it's prudent to maybe have a presentation or discussion or even a study session prior to having an ordinance to understand the information that you, you both received, that you worked with staff on, so that the full council has all of that. And not only just council, but the residents and everyone involved that has been focused on this topic for the last couple of years. So I think just for transparency, just for my sake, and I'm talking personally, I need more information as far as, and the information is coming in, which I appreciate from all levels. I'm just not there yet to talk about moving forward with an ordinance. I need more time to understand the background and the behind the scenes that came to developing these numbers and what was presented.
And I think, I think, City Manager Andrews can help us out on that side, and we can put those numbers together. I don't know if we want to bring the full spreadsheet up here. It's, it's a lot of fun, it's really big, but it gives us many iterations, and that's what we worked through for several hours, making sure that we also protect our bond rating, which is absolutely critical, and that we're in a, and, and these rates, too, we're just looking at this year, we were able to build in also a reasonable cost as far as price index for what a utility does. So staff shared that number with us, too. So I think we'll be able to take that part from that spreadsheet and, and bring that information to council.
Seeing nothing else, do we have reason for executive session?
Oh, can I just underline one thing?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Nammella?
Right, thank you. I, I just wanted to second Counselor Emmons in the desire for more information to better understand what the impacts of this are. I'm reticent and really unable to make a decision based on, you know, a string of emails that essentially is all the information. I, I need it in a form of just a logical explanation of, here's what we're reaching for, here's the water quality level that we're trying, you know, that we're aiming to have, here's the capital improvements that are going to be delayed as a result. And if we're pulling from general fund dollars, what are we foregoing as a result of that on other capital improvements within the city? So, because there's just like a lot of impacts that I'm just, I, you know, I don't know, they haven't been articulated. And I think the public would like to also understand what that is.
Counselor, Mayor Protem?
I just, I guess I have a question for Mr. Andrews. I mean, what you're gonna bring forward is an actual staff agenda memo that has all the things we're asking, right? Like, we're not being asked to make a decision based on that. I might, I just want to make sure I understand. Understanding is you guys educated us with here's what the numbers look like, and now we're gonna get the full story so we can actually give direction. That would include all the things that we would normally see, such as impact dollars and all the things that we would expect that have been mentioned here. Am I missing something?
That, that information could come right off that spreadsheet. It'll, it'll give us the next two years of CIP, it'll give us the next two years of every line item that you can see on there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Counselor Seymour. We, we can prepare an analysis of the current, what we call the Baker-Seymour proposal, and have that addressed in a staff memorandum that would accompany the rate proposal. It's a rate and fee change for 2023, this year, sorry, and that would, that would hold through 2023. So we can present the, the analysis of that and bring that to city council and then seek direction from you as to, as to next steps. Certainly, there, there are elements around, you know, the, the financial plan for, for the utility and the rate payers that we will endeavor to include in that memo so you have the, that bigger picture. It, you know, we won't be able to go beyond the spreadsheet modeling results at this time because we haven't, of course, had time to, you know, do any deeper work or, or such on, on some of the other elements. But we can, we can report what we believe are the impacts of this, of this proposal on the CIP program, on debt issuance abilities, all those key factors that have been, that have been referenced.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question as one who might be involved in drafting an ordinance based on council's direction. Would it be possible to have this discussion on the 14th and give staff some direction on the 14th, once you have evaluated the information you've received? I, I just don't know what the ordinance would look like today in advance of that discussion. So my, my one request would be, would it be possible to have that discussion inform the staff direction?
Counselor Emmons?
I'd be supportive of having a discussion before we do a runaround of drafting and pivoting on an ordinance where I think efficiency is best in having the discussion first. I can tell you right now, I'm just, I'm not comfortable making a decision without all that, the, the very, various information that we need as a council, at least I need, to move forward with a competent vote, so.
Counselor Izadi?
I just want to third that. I would like more information, transparent in front of the public. Let's have a full discussion, and then after that, we have an ordinance.
Well, I really wanted it for the 14th, but I'd be happy to do it on the 28th, if you think a discussion, because just like we worked with staff, absolutely, we work with council and will serve your needs and why these are the good numbers. Absolutely.
So even though we have a council meeting, we can have a discussion part for next week?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I haven't seen, I have no idea what's gonna be on an agenda, but.
I think that would be helpful if that's acceptable to the manager.
We, we could look at an agenda format. It might be post-meeting, which, which might be a more suitable way to do this, and bring a, a post-meeting staff report in for you to review in post-meeting, and then bring it back, depending on council's direction at that meeting, to a subsequent meeting.
Thanks. Anything else? Executive session, do we have to vote again, or?
So there are two executive sessions agendized.
Right, but do we have to approve Counselor Nammella to come to it?
You don't. The, the motion covered all the exec sessions for the evening, for her remote participation. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the WEDA exec session is recommended to be conducted first of the two that are remaining. Thank you. So the WEDA executive session is to discuss the possible sale of WEDA-owned property located on a portion of Block A1 of downtown Westminster, containing the former U.S. Bank Building, to 4775 Holdings LLC, doing business as Marzick Fine Foods, and also the, the status of the Schnitzer office transaction, and to discuss, excuse me, to instruct the authorities' negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and 7, as well as Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for A and E1.
Are there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll pull the council to go into executive session for this issue. Counselor Baker? Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Counselor, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
And do we have to do the second one?
While we're on the record for our study session, if council's willing, the second executive session, one moment.
Might as well not have to come back out.
Get my camera on again.
We're done for the night?
Yes, I think it would be efficient. The second executive session that's proposed to conclude the evening is an executive session discussion of a personnel matter, discussion of next steps in recruitment process for city manager pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Section 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 246402 for F1.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mayor Protem? And Counselor Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Okay, we, it is 10:07, and we adjourn this meeting. We can take a break.